And I've just said all that when I've been on mute. So, welcome everybody to Dawlish Town Council Planning Committee. It's Thursday 22nd of October. We were due to start at seven. I do apologise for anyone who was trying to log in and watch or listen to this item. We just had a few technical issues. You haven't missed anything. We're just running a little bit late. Do apologise. Okay, so welcome everybody. Welcome to members who are here. I'll take us through the normal agenda items. Yola, do we have any apologies for absence, please?
Yes, we have one apology from councillor Alison Foden.
Thank you. Are we all happy to accept those apologies? All members present, can I just show fans if you're happy? Thank you. We haven't got an agenda between parts one and two. We don't need to look at that. Any declarations of interest at all for any of the items that we have coming up? No? Oh, councillor Taylor and councillor Tamlin. Councillor Taylor first and then councillor Tamlin, carry on.
So, number one, Stockton Avenue.
Okay. Is it your intention to speak and not vote or neither for those?
I'll do neither. I won't take part in the...
Right.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Tamlin, can you...
Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
13 Wych Road, I'd like to speak on it but not take any part in voting.
There won't be, well, there won't be a vote. We're going to be discussing that item first thing anyway councillor Tamlin, but no, that's absolutely fine. Councillor Heath, you wanted to declare an interest?
I want to check whether the mic's now working. Can you hear me?
It is working.
Oh, fantastic. I've used the old tablet, right, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna mute you now so we can carry on with the meeting. Okay, that's fine. So, am I right in thinking we have no urgent dispensations at this point? Yola, in which case can we go on to the minutes of the last meeting? Has everyone had a chance to have a look at the minutes for the last meeting? And are you happy for me to sign them as an accurate record of the last meeting? If you can indicate with your hands if that is the case. Thank you. So, I'll get those signed. Thank you, Yola. Do we have any correspondence? Thank you.
We do. Just before I go through that, just to let members of the public know that might be watching on Facebook, link to this meeting, the updated link following the technical difficulties should be on there for anyone to follow. So, just to let you know. So, correspondence. We've got applications granted in support of this council's recommendation. 50 Tinmouth Road roof alterations. 21 Woodland Avenue two-storey side and rear extensions and rebuild first floor. Hounspool Ashcombe Road conversion of outbuilding to annex to the main dwelling. 25 Coronation Avenue detached garden room. Millennium Business Units Dawlish Business Park erection of four business units with parking uses class B1, B2 and B8. 55 Tinmouth Road two-story side extension, new external stairs to existing balcony and new roof covering. To alter this to close, variation of condition one on planning permission, eighteen oblique, zero one five three nine oblique V8R. Variation of condition of planning permission, eighteen oblique, zero zero three five one oblique FUL. Construction dwellings and two replacement dwellings following demolition of existing two allow changes built on the side, including alterations to retaining wall. One four seven X to roadside story, sorry, single-story side extension with new outbuilding.
Thank you.
Applications granted where this council recommended refusal unless the arbicultural officer supported the proposal. Land adjacent to Stones Park crown reduce one second more in woodland area W3 and to three metres. Applications where prior approval was not required. Land at nine three double five zero seven eight zero five four of Greenway Lane livestock and storage building. Exemption works to trees in conservation. Poston House, Priory Road crown lift all trees over highway to the height of 5.6 metres pruning secondary and tertiary growth only. Appeals dismissed contrary to this council's recommendation. Three Mount Pleasant Road roof extension conversion ground floor extensions balcony terraces to rear. Applications to be considered at Teambridge District Council virtual planning meeting on Tuesday 27th of October 2020, starting at 10am. Land to the east of the A379 adjoining Shutterton Farm. Change of use to an area within car park for citing of a concession unit.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Wow, quite a list. Okay. So, do we have any members of the public who've applied to speak at all, Yola? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to item eight, which is a special item in the sense that we're revisiting 13 Wych Road. I'm aware councillor Tamlin, you wanted to speak on this one, but I'm just going to introduce it. This item we have, we did discuss in the last meeting and we have called this in to be debated at Teambridge District Council. However, they want us to specify and decide on the wording of the call-in as it is listed, this building. I'm trying to look at the wording, listed building. Advice that they're looking for. So, we're looking at the advice from that point of view. So, councillor Tamlin, do you want to start us off as you've asked to speak on this item? So, councillor Tamlin.
Right, I'm muted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, fine. Okay. I'd like to give the following reasons as to why I feel that this application should go to committee category B. I have consulted the 2019 MPPF paragraphs 95 and 96. I am aware of the content of the Historic England Document 2019. The old vicarage 13 Wych Road has been a longstanding local issue of some 20 years plus. And the local residents feel that this application is their last chance to bring the site back to use. It has never gone before a Part B committee at Teambridge District Council in all those years, to the best of my knowledge. Despite a number of planning applications which have been refused by individual planning officers, again, to the best of my knowledge. It has become a controversial and sensitive issue in Dawlish over the time. Public interest has surely been demonstrated by the number of comments and views on the Teambridge District website regarding the application. I believe approximately 70-plus positive comments cannot be ignored. A resident action group is being, has been in being and there has been well-attended ongoing public meetings. Dawlish has two district councillors who represent the electors of the Dawlish South West Ward where the site is located. One of whom is also on the Dawlish Town Council Planning Committee, whose members have supported the request for the current application to become a category B, on the category B agenda in the interest of the public and community. I understand that an application can go to Part B because of the desire of the members of the public to have a greater say in the decision-making process. Furthermore, this should apply to this application in view of the fact that it has aroused significant public interest through exposure on BBC Spotlight, local newspapers and the social media. These points raised, in my opinion, clearly demonstrate that this application should go into category B in the public interest as requested by Dawlish Town Council Planning Committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Tamlin. I think we can most certainly add to our notes for the actual wording for this. And if I can ask you, Yola, to obviously note this, we're going to be recording the meeting anyway, that one of the additional reasons for the call-in is the public interest in this item for the town. I think it's best that we all, as members of this committee, please submit other items and other ideas as what we need to put in here. My thoughts are that it definitely should be that it's in the public interest. The setting of the building has been diminished and severely compromised by previous planning permissions. And we want this to become a positive addition to the street scene rather than the 20-plus years of, although it is a listed building, a ruinous state that has become surrounded by a housing estate. So, I'm, words to that effect is where I'm going and I'm quite happy for members to contribute to this. But I thought I would kick off by adding some words of my own for us to go from there. And I've got lots of hands in the air. Yola, I'm going to take you first and then you councillor Morehead, if that's all right. Thank you. And then councillor Tamlin, I think.
Just to clarify, obviously, the decision was made last time around. And obviously, they've asked for additional specific criteria details and they provide a link to the National Planning Policy Framework. And obviously, the very specific listed building reasons before. So, I know obviously you've probably all had a look at that, but I think they're probably looking for quite a concise list that obviously does relate to why this particular development should not be refused for the same reasons as previous ones in terms of preserving listed buildings and the historical value etc. Because obviously, this particular proposal is, from my understanding, is obviously a lot more conservative than previous ones and is probably as close to conserving what is there as possible. So, obviously, if you want to refer to a number of reasons that I can then obviously put on the form, that would be amazing.
Okay, okay. Councillor Tamlin, you have your hand raised, but I'm conscious that councillor Morehead picture at the post.
It's just a quickie, really. I understand that it's about wanting to go to Part B to the committee, nothing else. And the other, yeah, okay.
Councillor Morehead, you wanted to say something. Please go ahead. I think your internet is frozen councillor Morehead. Ah, you've just moved. That's good.
MPPF, chapter 16, I think it is, item 185. The desirability of sustaining enhancing the significance of heritage assets and putting them to viable uses consistent with their conservation. This is, I've got two or three points. This planning application includes partial conservation and also putting part of the so-called asset to a viable use. And it's conserving the conservation of the main footprint of the building. Then in item B, it says wider social, cultural, economic and environmental benefits. I can't see that that applies. It has no economic benefit and as far as the environment goes, this building is just an island now in the middle of a considerable modern development. And going on to proposals affecting heritage assets, which is number 189, paragraph 189. This refers to, in determining applications, local planning authorities should require an applicant to describe the significance of any heritage assets affected, including any contribution made by their setting. Again, I would point out that the setting of this building has been totally destroyed over more recent years, but quite some time, by development which has been allowed to take place, completely surrounding it, other than a minor piece of ground around it. And then going down to paragraph 192, again, it says item A, it refers to viable uses. Well, and their conservation. Again, this is turning this into a partially viable use. And it is certainly partial conservation because there is the expectation that the Gig House, I believe we know it as, will be conserved and that the other cob buildings which are in such a state of disrepair will be brought down to first floor level and will then be formed as a walled garden, which is still to my mind conserving the footprint of the, in a reasonable manner, of the original overall building. And then at the end, 194, it says any harm to or loss of the significance of a designated heritage asset should require clear and convincing justification. Well, it is no longer significant. It's one odd building left in an island of modern buildings, including even a block of flats. And the actual, the land that belonged to this vicarage when it was first built was substantial. It led all the way down to Brook and over a footbridge to access to the church. None of that exists now. And in fact, part of that development is even called Vicarage Gardens. So, I think it substantially harmed this particular building and reduces the impact of the loss of any heritage asset. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Did anyone else have anything else to add? I think we've got quite a bit of meat on the bones from that point of view from councillor Morehead's contribution. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, councillor Morehead makes some very good points. I have a copy of the MPPF, chapter 16, conserving and enhancing the historic environment on my desk also. And was about to make some of those very same, the same, raise the same issues. Perhaps making slightly different or slightly, slightly different view, taking a slightly different view. Certainly with regard to paragraph 185A, the desirability of sustaining and enhancing the significance of heritage assets and putting them to viable uses. It's 185 says this strategy should take into account all of the following. And that should take it into account, doesn't say all of the following, but it is one of the items that it should take account of. And to, as I understand it, this scheme is probably the only viable scheme that we are going to see for this site. And in terms of leading to the restoration of the Victorian wing and the Gig House, I think it should be commended. It is certainly sad to lose the rest of the building. But 185 does refer to heritage assets at risk through neglect, decay or other threats. Now, I'm not going to comment on neglect. I don't think that's our place to do that. But certainly, we are seeing a decayed building. And it's decaying because of the materials it's made from. It absorbs and releases water every season, does cob. And we've seen that the other threats, Hurricane Dennis made a big dent in the side of it. And the longer this building is allowed to sit around the way it is at the moment, the threats from the environment will become threats to the public. So, I think it very much is in the public interest that we do, that we support this application. So, that it would be of benefit to the, not just to the local residents, but to the town. But I do also think it's a good application in allowing those parts of the building to be restored and to come into use. So, if you look at B, 185B, the wider social, cultural, economic and environmental benefits. Well, certainly from a social and economic benefit, there will be an extra house that we can provide in Dawlish and it'll provide council tax receipt. So, there we are. There's an economic benefit. So, we could tick that box as well. As for desirability of new development, I think this, making a positive contribution, I do believe it makes a positive contribution in the sense that when it's restored and with the demolition back to the base materials of the original part of the building, which from many aspects, even when it was in good condition, wasn't the most beautiful building. But leaving all of that aside, I believe that to have it as a relic, as a wreck if you like, but in a containable one with the older part of the building just reduced to a walled garden will bring to mind not, I hope, the building in its parlous condition that we see now. But perhaps think back to, you know, there was, for instance, a suggestion perhaps that we might wish to make is that an information board with one of the pictures that we saw from the heritage submission with this application. A picture as it was back in the 30s before...
In its heyday.
Before time weather and everything else took its toll. And people can remember it better then. So, I think we should be positive about this application. Certainly, there is a loss to a heritage asset. And again, if we want to take, you know, a beneficial view of the MPPF, I think 195 covers it regarding the nature of the heritage asset prevents all reasonable uses of the site. I think it does, I think all of the following do apply. So, that's 195A, B, C and D. If our club wants to make a mention of those as well. So, it's 185A, B, C and D and 195A, B, C and D as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, 185A and B.
You got that, Yola? Thank you. Councillor Wrigley, you wanted to say something and councillor Morehead, I'll bring you back after councillor Wrigley, if that's all right.
I think councillor Taylor has probably just got to it at the end there. I mean, all of the reasons he was quoting were very good. But I think what they're looking for are the very specific planning reasons why this should be called in to committee. We can extol the virtues of this for a long time, but that's actually...
Sorry, your sound's breaking up a bit councillor Wrigley. Could you say that again?
Oh, sorry. Is it? Okay. The, we can extol the virtues of this application as much as we like, but that won't help. We have to give them planning reasons why the heritage aspect is overruled by the public benefit. Now, I'm not sure if those particular paragraphs that we quoted give that, but that's, I think, what they're looking for. I'm not sure that public interest is a planning reason. They always say that planning is not a popularity contest. So, that a thousand complaints won't necessarily overturn a planning decision sadly. But they do say that you need something that is a valid planning reason on the form to call it into committee.
Yeah.
So, if those paragraphs that we quoted give us that planning reason, then we've done our job. But I'm not, I don't have those open in front of me sadly.
As I understand it, that's where we're at. Yola, if you can also let us know what you've got. And councillor Taylor, you wanted to come back in. Councillor Morehead, I'll bring you in as well.
So, if I may then, Chair, yes, 195 does mention public benefits. If I can read out the lead into the various sections of it, where a proposed development will lead to substantial harm, as this one will, or total loss of significance of, as happened perhaps at Brunel Seewell. A designated heritage asset, of a designated heritage asset. Local planning authorities should refuse consent unless it can be demonstrated that the substantial harm or total loss is necessary to achieve substantial public benefits that outweigh that harm or loss. Or all of the following apply. The nature of the heritage asset prevents all reasonable uses of the site. And no viable use of the heritage asset itself can be found in the medium term through appropriate marketing that will enable its conservation. And conservation by grant funding or some form of not-for-profit charitable or public ownership is demonstrably not possible. And the harm or loss is outweighed by the benefits of bringing the site back into use. So, I think there's a perfectly good case to be made for this application under 195A, B, C and D. And on that basis, I would like this, I would like us to ask our planning department, the Teambridge Planning Department, to take this matter to committee if the officer is minded to refuse.
Okay, thank you. Is that your proposal councillor Taylor? Are you happy to propose us that? And councillor Morehead, you wanted to, I've got two hands in front of you. Councillor Morehead, you want us to speak as well?
Before we come to a proposal, I would just like to remind us of paragraph 185A. Bringing them back into viable use is consistent with their conservation. And my point's there, this is partly coming back into viable use and conserving the footprint of the cob building as a walled garden and conserving the Gig House. And then again, going back to 192, it again mentions viable uses consistent with their conservation. That's 192A, which again covers the same sub-topic. And 194, which was, sorry, it was, thank you pardon, conserving and enhancing the historic environment, which was 185 again, yes. There is no historic environment. This is what we want committee to be able to look at and to refer to this. We're being told to refer to it and we can see several items in there which show that it should be properly considered. There is, the historic environment has been already decimated. So, I think it's what we're saying and referring specifically to these paragraphs is exactly what they asked us to do.
Absolutely councillor Morehead, totally agree there. I've got councillor Tamlin next and then councillor Wrigley, if that's okay. Councillor Tamlin, you wanted to come in? Councillor Tamlin, you're just on mute. I'm just trying to ask you to unmute at the moment.
Yeah, what Gary said I agree with. I actually said paragraphs 95 and 96, but it is 195 and 196, as Gary said. I think at the end of the day, although Teambridge, one of the Teambridge officers said they can do nothing about this. I think that if the loss and harm of historical assets, take West Rail for example. I mean, that got through it committee and yet they had a lot of historical assets, didn't it? But as I see it, it was in the public interest, not just the public, but the national interest. So, I see this, that we can, in the public interest, lose some of this historical value, which is a shame. But that can be done and that's in the paragraphs that Gary quoted, that's 95 and 96. So, we can lose some of that, the loss of harm to historical assets can be lost or overruled by public interest.
Absolutely. And that's something that was brought up by councillor Taylor. So, that's already been said. So, thank you for emphasising that. Yola, you wanted to come in. I know I'm conscious councillor Wrigley's also got his hand up, so carry on.
Yeah, it's just, obviously, just to let members know, obviously, it was minuted, but whether, had a chance to see it. The reason that was given to committee previously was that it was in the public interest. And that wasn't enough. So, they did, yeah, they did want more. So, obviously, these reasons proving it's in the public interest is fine, but public interest wasn't enough.
On its own. Yeah, that's fine. I think we've given enough meat on the bone from that point of view. Councillor Wrigley, you wanted to come in as well. Thank you.
The difficult paragraph in this section, I recall we looked at this before, is 191, which is where there is evidence of deliberate neglect of or damage to a heritage asset. The deteriorated state of the heritage asset should not be taken into account in any decision.
Yep.
So, I think if we are to be successful in taking this into committee or successful in making a case, then we need to make a statement about paragraph 191 and a condition upon why that does not apply in this case. I think the argument is that they have over the last... I think the argument is that they have, over the last, however many years, 30 plus years.
Yeah.
Tried to find solutions to fix it. And this is the last solution that is considered viable. And so we believe that paragraph 191 should not apply.
I think it's right that we address that. And I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads from that point of view. So a very good point, well made. Thank you councillor Wrigley. Does anyone else have anything else to add? I think we've covered an awful lot of that document. But I think that sounds a much more robust statement. Councillor Morehead, you have your hand raised. So I'll just try and unmute you, sorry.
We keep talking about and reading assets. In my understanding, an asset is something which has a financial value. And I can't think of, this is not part of our submission, but I can't think of anyone who would want to buy that site at the moment with the constraints on it, because there's no way they could make a financial profit on it. But anyway, that's just a by the by. But this is assets and liabilities, isn't it?
Okay. Well, has everyone, I think everyone has had their say on that. And am I right in thinking that we have, oh councillor Taylor, you wanted to come in? It's me thinking we were going to be able to draw to a close, that's okay.
Yeah, but by all means, chair, just a small point to, I think you've got to take the word heritage and S, two words heritage and assets together really, when you're looking at such applications. I know councillor Morehead understands these matters very well indeed. But, but yes, heritage assets are named such for a very good reason. And yes, any decisions that we take on those shouldn't be taken lightly. And I don't take the decision, I think we're all very, very serious indeed about the decision that we're taking, we're taking this evening. And I hope it is sufficient to take it to an audience which I hope will, in public, give a reason for whatever decision is made at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Heath, you wanted to come in before we conclude this pod meeting?
Yeah, I just thought, I've just Googled assets, just to make sure we're right on that one. And actually, it's got a much broader definition, believe it or not, we want to be funded. It doesn't just mean finance at all. It actually means the things, I really, the things that belong to you. So it's about belonging to somebody, that's all. It doesn't, that doesn't have to be financial. So if they do quote that, they're actually not quoting the dictionary.
Thank you for that point. Is everyone happy with, we've got where we need to be on that one? Councillor Tamlin, one last point. And we need to get to some other items, I know, but I want to make sure everyone is happy. Councillor Tamlin, we can't hear you.
Okay, you can hear me now, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd just like, yeah, I would just like to say, after this item, please, can I leave the meeting because have a prior engagement?
Absolutely councillor Tamlin, I understand that. Well, we'll draw this item to a close. I think we've got enough information. Everyone seems to have had their say. So thank you for that. And we'll move on to the new items in front. And thank you very much for your input councillor Tamlin, and see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Yola, we'll move on to the, thank you. Okay, so we've got the land adjacent to High Tour, Two Cliffs Road. Those of you with long memories will remember this item. We have seen, I believe, a plan for this part of the land. And this is for two houses on this plan, on this plot. Okay, thank you. Okay, if we can come back to members, I think we've all had a look. Is everyone familiar where we are with this item? It's the, as you, as the brow of the hill before you get to the Timmths, just after the Timmths sign, there's a turning and the, there's a small cul-de-sac that goes down to the footpath that takes you down to Timmths. So there is quite a bit of land there. And I think some of the questions in the past have been, not that I'm trying to put words into members' mouths here, but about access, et cetera, that kind of thing. Councillor Martin Heath, if you would like to go ahead, you have your blue hand raised.
Yes, I just thought I'd point out to the meeting, Chair, that I've had a couple of tweets of people who live in this road, and unfortunately, they couldn't get onto Zoom. Although I've actually sent them the link, they obviously haven't. They did want to speak on it, but I have got their notes anyway. And I believe their objections are actually on the website. So I don't think I need to repeat it. But I've actually looked at this one, being in my territory, because I do remember it actually with councillor Gary Taylor way back. And they proposed to knock an old ancient wall down and come out in Woodlands Avenue. That was refused. So now they're trying to come out in Cliff Road. The point is, I think, just for members that don't know, because it's a long way away, actually literally on the, sitting on the border, literally of Timmths. So it's just in our boundary. It's a landlocked piece of land that they've never been able to build on in the past because of access problems. And the land in principle can be built on, so it's a bit of a conflict here because it's in the parish boundaries, it's not outside it. So that's why it does have outline planning permission. But I think originally it was one. Now this new plan that's come forward is for two, which is a bit strange. So they've made it a little bit worse on that. But the other things remain the same. So I will make a proposal, not just yet. I'd like to hear what others have got to say, but I've made lots of notes. And I think, I think I know where this should go, but obviously, all members have to agree. So just to open it back to you for whatever.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to, has anyone else got an opinion on this item? Anything they'd like to bring to the table? Councillor Taylor, you were off the mark, and then councillor Wrigley. So if you'd like to go ahead councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I understand there's an issue with some trees and some TPOs with the site. I haven't got that information in front of me, but I have been advised by a member of the public that that is the case.
As of today, our tree arbicultural officer at Teanbridge has put an arbicultural objection to the proposal. There are at least three trees on the plot that these two properties will compromise. And although the actual application does say that the application's in partnership with the Teanbridge District Council's Arbicultural Officer, he's not aware of that partnership. So I think he's inspected the site and has put that consultation response from the tree officer on the site as of today's date. So obviously, that is of concern for members here today. That's something I was going to bring up. So thank you councillor Taylor, good timing. Was there anything else you wanted to add? Or I will turn to councillor Wrigley, if that's.
I'm a little bit concerned about access as well, Chair. Not just, not just the narrowness of the lane, Cliff Road. And as councillor Heath points out, it's partly, it is very close to the boundary. In fact, I think if the lane had a white line down the middle, half of it would be in Timmths and half of it would be in Dawlish Parish.
Yes.
It's a very, it's a very difficult turning. I'm wondering whether there might be a highways objection from the amount of new traffic that this application could generate. But also the access to the site itself is a very narrow lane. I'm wondering about turning and things like that.
No, I'm afraid what we're seeing is a standard, no comment on, from the point of view of roads at the moment, but there isn't much of it, much of access, I must agree, from that point of view. Councillor Wrigley, you wanted to come here, and then councillor Heath.
Well, I suspect we've probably all been approached by several residents on this one as well. There do seem to be quite a few concerns about this, some of which have been raised. But there are a lot of questions on this site. Two houses so close, right to the cliff, the Cliff Road, the trees. There's all sorts of reasons why this isn't looking, this isn't looking favourable. I'll leave it up to councillor Heath to make the proposal. But I think, I think it's fairly clear where this should go.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Heath, you have your electronic hand up if you wanted to come back?
Yes, I think I would like to make a proposal, not to cut the debate, because obviously, we can carry on talking about it, a yes or a no. It is a strange one, because technically, there's nothing stopping them building here. And the designs actually of the houses are quite good. Just wish it wasn't there. And that's, that is the problem, and it is where it is. So I would like to propose, we refuse planning consent on the following grounds.
Okay.
One, it's quite a lot, I'm using Martin Wrigley's ideas, I've given them everything, so bear with it.
Okay.
Refuse, sorry, sorry, refusals, plural, have been given in the past for other dwellings accessing onto Cliff Road due to this unmade single-track road being a joint footpath to the fields and cliffs with no dedicated footpaths. I'm going too fast, Yola, just stop me. Okay, number two, this roadway, number two, this roadway is a favourite place for walkers and dog walkers alike, with dogs often off the lead. Therefore, extra vehicles would pose more safety issues unless the applicant was prepared to pay for the widening of the road and provide a dedicated footpaths subject to highways permission. Number three, the junction with the A379 and Cliff Road is a dangerous junction. And any extra traffic from Cliff Road would add to that danger. Number four, just waiting for Yola to give me the yes. Number four, two houses would have great difficulty being built without taking down or damaging the trees with TPOs. We do not accept, in this case, that the trees should be removed. And number five, finally, nearly finally, although an amount of money has been agreed, although an amount of money has been agreed to compensate wildlife loss and ecology damage, we do not agree that the money will make much a long-term difference in helping wildlife that has used this site for a very, comma, very long time. And finally, one line of number six, there are concerns over surface water running onto other properties lower down. There are concerns over surface water running on to other properties lower down. I think I've covered just some of the objections in my own understanding of the site. And obviously, members might want to add something to it, which I'm very happy if they want to.
Thank you councillor Heath. That's pretty robust, so thank you very much. Councillor Wrigley?
Sorry, can I add to the flooding concerns? That this is, of course, the area above the area of cliff that caused the damage on the railway, which was due to excess water being drained through those cliffs. So any, any water solution or soakaway solution would be endangering the railway for which we've just thrown away our precious station.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think, I mean, you've got all of that information, Yola, that's been stated so far. And councillor Morehead, you wanted to come in? Can't hear you, can't hear you councillor Morehead.
Yeah, just a by the by, but picking up on what councillor Wrigley's just added. New houses means more hard standing, more drives, more runoff, less absorption of rainfall. It's just.
Sorry, can I second councillor Heath's proposal, please?
You can indeed councillor Wrigley, thank you.
Added into that the neighbours' concerns about overlooking as well.
I think there's also neighbours' concerns about boundaries, but that, we're relieved there's an awful lot of detail in some of the comments that are made from that point of view. I think we can, we can have those as well. But, okay, we have a proposal from councillor Heath. It's been seconded by councillor Wrigley. If everyone's had their say and it looks like it, can we have a vote on that one, please? Proposal to refuse planning permission on the grounds as stated. Thank you. Okay, Yola. I can ask you to take us to the next one, please? And we're heading to Bad Lake Hill. In Dawlish, removal of the existing shingle and timber porch to expose the original porch canopy. This is listed building consent. Very straightforward item in the sense that we've just got a drawing there. Councillor Taylor, you have your hand up already. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I spoke about the last listed building consent application at some length. I don't need to, I don't need to be talking about this one. I would propose acceptance. I see no reason at all for this to be allowed, for not to be.
Okay. Thank you councillor Lather, you have your hand up as well? No, no, okay, thank you. Were you just about to second the proposal? Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Councillor Wrigley picked you at the post from that point of view, but that's fine. Okay.
I'm happy for councillor Lather to be seconding it if I did, because I spoke out of turn.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. All right, thank you councillor. Yeah, you can't seem to, you can't seem to unmute. Let's see if I can help you. There you go. Yeah, there you go.
No, yeah, I'm quite happy with councillor Wrigley. Picked you muted at the post. Because he was unmuted, that's what, how he did.
Ah, okay. Thank you councillor Lather, so we have a proposal.
Yes.
And we have a second, so we'll vote on that, please, to accept as is. Everyone happy with that? Thank you, we are indeed, so thank you. And now we're going to have a look at 11 Marine Parade, 2001672. So if you, if you could take us there, please? And this is the removal of a chimney stack. This item, this address has been before, as before, members might recall. But this is a totally new application with just the removal of the chimney stack that involved here. And it's at the rear of the elevation, you can see it just there in the dotted lines, the rear of the property. I think what it's doing is enabling them to open plan and take the fireplace out and block up so they can take out the chimney there and reconfigure the house. Okay. Okay, councillor Morehead, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Just a sort of general comment, really. Before they started that work and removed an internal wall, they must have known that the chimney wasn't going to be able to be supported. But it's just sad that number 10 next door is a beautiful grade two listed building, absolutely lovely to look at. But number 11 has been altered, to my mind, to the detriment really, over the years. So I can't see that losing one chimney is going to make much difference. It's been, you can see the comparison, what it would have been like and could have been like. But it's already totally changed. So personally, I wouldn't see an objection.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Lather, let's see if we can hear your voice this time, shall we? There we go.
Yeah, very quickly, I was going to second it. You know, there is, you know.
We haven't had, we haven't had a proposal, but if you would like to make a proposal. She said she had no objection.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll make a proposal that, you know, it's. Accepted.
Accepted with no, that's, no, that's fine. A proposal to accept it, accept as stated. Yeah, okay, thank you councillor Lather. And any members happy to second councillor Lather's? Proposal? Or any other further debate need to, wow, I'm getting two, two or three hands up at one go, so please. Feel free to, okay, councillor Moorhead, as you spoke first, you carry on.
I was just going to second councillor Lather's proposal.
That's absolutely fine, thank you. Well, we will. Absolutely fine, we'll go to a vote on that. We have a proposal, we accept with no objection. And it's been seconded by councillor Moorhead, so if we, members, if we could go to a vote on that one, please. Thank you. Right, we're going to move on to the next item, please. And this is. 200169564 First Avenue. And this is the erection of a dwelling with garage. If Yola can find the relevant plan for us, thank you. There we go. So members might recognise where this, this item, this is from the actual map. Just on the bend of First, we're First Avenue and. Third Avenue. Okay, everyone had a chance to have a look at that. Okay, councillor Moorhead, you have your hand raised. If you'd like to go ahead.
It's quite close to this end of town and is in the South West Ward. And I'm fairly familiar with that area and I have looked on Google Earth as well as the plans and so forth. And I have concerns that it is. Very much squeezed into that site. There are, there's double garages underneath which suggests considerable vehicular movement. And it's almost exactly opposite a junction and very playful play area. So. I'm not too happy myself.
Okay, as I understand it councillor Moorhead, this has come before, planning before, quite a while ago, I believe. But without a garage. And I think the concern in the previous instances of this item is that there would be. No provision for parking on the road, which is why I think they've added. A garage in this case to make it a safer prospect for anyone with a car. But yes, you're right, as the plan showed, it is actually just on the bend of the road from that point of view. Councillor Lather, did you have your hand raised? I'm sorry, I can, no? Okay, that's fine. Did anyone else want to come in on this one, please? No? Okay, councillor, councillor Lather, I thought you were thinking about it, carry on.
Right, when I was looking at the map, it looked as if there was a footpath. It wasn't a road, so was it?
It's a pavement around the corner, so it's, it's at a junction of. The road just past the school, it's just past the, past the school and the, where the, you've got the pavement. And you've also got the, across the road from it is like a little, as councillor Moorhead said, a playground, a little mini playground.
Okay, so that it's actually a road round the corner. Because the map just looked to me as if it was just a footpath round the corner.
I think it is, it's an access road to, I think, to garages and what have you.
Okay, so that's why they call it a footpath. Yeah. No, I, I don't think it's in a good place.
Okay, so you have concerns about the location of the item?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, councillor, councillor Taylor, you wanted to come in?
Certainly, thank you Chair. I would echo those concerns made by councillor Lather. Because of the proximity of the exit from the garage to the corner as well. Although it's on the side of the road. Before the corner. It could mean that cars are forced or would consider moving out to allow people to come out of the garage if they saw them trying to emerge. Given that the garage is right on, right on the footpath, this little. Driveway to allow for a splay. So you'd need to stick your nose of your car out. Which, would you, so you'd block the pavement. And somebody might say, oh, I'll just move out a bit and then find themselves in the path of the car coming the other way. So there's. And being opposite junction as well. Makes it, makes it particularly difficult to exit. So I do have concerns about that. I'm concerned also about the size of the house for the plots and the amenity of the residence. So. I'm struggling with this one really. Yes, we need the housing, but I'm concerned that it's actually overdevelopment of the plot.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Moorhead, I'll bring you back shortly, if that's all right. Councillor Heath, he hasn't had a word yet, we'll have him first and then I'll bring you back if that's all right. Councillor Heath.
Yes, I believe Gary Taylor is taking the words out.
Sorry.
Yeah, just going to do it on the other screen. If you were to tweak the house round, there's virtually no garden left. So the house represents definitely a lot more than 50% of the plot. And I think if we were to say no, we could certainly have one of our lines as overdevelopment for the size of the plot. In awkward position, it is a funny wording, but something like that anyway.
Okay, are you making a proposal to that, to that effect councillor Heath?
Well, I think we needed a little bit more than that and I think we should add to what Gary said. As well, which I'm going to have to repeat it now because I've actually forgotten exactly what he said.
Okay, no, that's absolutely fine. Councillor Moorhead, can I ask you to add to this item as well, please?
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to add to it so much as ask whether a finance officer could bring up that. Plan again so that we can just have one more look at the actual constraint of the site and the, to my mind. Rather dangerous position on that bend so that we can reacquaint ourselves.
That's fine. The site location, I think, is the most important bit, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the one I've got.
Yeah.
No, there's another one somewhere.
There's a more clear one.
There it is. That's it.
So that is quite, yeah, triangular spot. Yeah.
It's very dang, well. There.
Yeah.
Not good.
Okay, so we've had councillor Heath saying that he considers it to be overdevelopment of the site, I believe. I'm not trying to put words into your mouth councillor Heath.
Correct.
But you, overdevelopment of the site and what was the other point that you made? Apologies for.
I think we shared the other comments that was made about the pavement coming out of an awkward angle without a splay. Causing a safety issue for the footpath and road.
Okay, for access by car or by foot?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other points that members would like to make to that proposal? Councillor Ridley, you haven't contributed so far, so I'll ask you to come in, please.
Down to the footpath, I would add in consideration of the closeness of the school, because of course this is the. The route to the school as well.
It is, there's going to be quite a lot of footfall and roads and cars and what have you around the time of pick up and drop off and what have you.
Anytime I've been there, that pavement is busy.
Yes.
Yeah, so perhaps we should add that a semicolon and the use of the schoolchildren close by. Yeah?
Okay.
On the same sentence.
I will ask Yola to decide on a semicolon or comma, I'll let her decide on that one. Martin, if that's all right.
I know a lot of people have dropped semicolons these days, but I still think they're good English.
No, no, that's absolutely fine. I'm not going to argue on that point. Councillor Moorhead, did you have something to add as well?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I just, I would like to also add the fact that it would be. Directing vehicles directly onto that road at that junction with another substantial road. In conjunction with the fact that it's next door to the play area and whatever else. It's just not a good place.
Absolutely, yeah, okay. Have you got all of those concerns, Yola? I think, I mean, it's quite a, it's quite a list there from that point of view. So we've had a proposal from councillor Heath. Is any, is any member happy to second that proposal? I don't believe we have. We've got lots of hands going up at the same time. Councillor Ridley, I think yours was marginally ahead, if that's okay, so I'm going to take it that you've seconded that proposal. And if everyone is happy that they've said what they want to say, I'll take us to the vote if that's all right. Thank you. If you'd like to vote on refusal of that on the grounds as stated. Thank you. Thank you, Yola. Let's now move on to the next item. 2001769, this is listed building consent. And to lower Rixdale Farm and its barn conversion and demolition of cattle shed. So we've seen an item from this area in previous meetings, I think. So revised scheme to remove modern softwood roof trust to the historic barn and increase window opening area to proposed dining room extension. I don't believe I've seen any, there's heritage statement offering advice on this item, but I haven't seen any objections or particular comments. There's just literally advice from the heritage statement today, isn't criticizing, it's just a note on. Materials that should be used and noted from that point of view. Do any members have anything they'd like to add to this one at all? Councillor Ridley.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, this is one we've seen before and obviously this is revised design, but I think we approved it before. And it sounds like this is just an improvement on the design.
It was about the roof the last time we saw this. It was, it was the actual materials because it's all a listed 18th century. Well, cattle shed for want of a better word, and the conversion of that barn into a property. We're now looking at a slight change to the design to extend the rafters to make a better space, I guess, for a dining area by the sound of it. Okay, councillor Moorhead.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just a general thing, if there are no concerns from the heritage officers at Tinbridge. I just think, having seen this over the years, this site become, well, having it deteriorate. I think it's wonderful to see another listed building coming back into use. And I would guess that there will be more applications to convert more parts of it, but. It's in a perfectly nice, open setting. It's a beautiful building or will be as when they do all the roof. And I just think it's great to see something coming back, as it says in the NPPF, into viable use.
Well said councillor Moorhead from that point of view. That's fine. Councillor Lather, you wanted to contribute to the meeting, please go ahead.
Right, I was just going to agree with councillor Moorhead. That this is, you know, an old building that if they don't do something, just goes into disrepair. And I think it's wonderful to bring, bring things back. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else to say about this? Everyone seems to be. Well, positive, I would say, if you don't mind me paraphrasing the expressions on your faces from here. Are you happy for me to propose from the chair that we accept this proposal? Okay, I will do so that we accept this with no further comment. And we'll take a vote on that, members, if that's okay, please. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item. This is a. A tree item. It's the removal of the lower limbs of a turkey oak. And we have a piece of paper. Near Hawken Hall, as you can see, it's not, I'm sure it's detailed enough from that point of view. But that, I think, is all we have to actually, to view. But it is a TPO, so although it's a piece of paper, we are able to accept it as such. Members, I'm minded to accept this with the advice of the Tinbridge Tree Officers' advice and put our hands, put ourselves in his hands if he's satisfied that. This is a responsible piece of planning work that needs to be done. So I'm happy to propose that from the chair that we accept with that, we accept it on the condition of the Tree Officers' consent. Are members happy for that? Thank you. So if we take a vote on that. Thank you. And now we're going on to Stockton Avenue and councillor Taylor, you wanted to not take part in this one. So shall we put you, shall we put you in the waiting room? Yola, would you be obliged to? Excellent. So this is 2001813 and it's a single storey front and side extension to one Stockton Avenue. So it's, you can see it's quite different style of windows that are going through. If we can scroll through those one more time, Yola, that would be useful. So those are the windows existing. And it looks like it's becoming more of an open plan ground floor with those large windows. Okay. If members are happy that they've seen enough of that one and hopefully have already had a look at it. Has anyone got any points they would like to raise on it? This is, does everyone know where the actual house is? It's roughly halfway up Stockton Hill, I think, from that point of view, so. It certainly would be, I wondered about overlooking, but I think. The fact that it's on a hill, I don't think it can, it can't help but overlook. So I don't think we have a situation where we are actually overlooking neighbours, because there's already windows that would be overlooking. Neighbouring properties from that point of view. Councillor Lather and then councillor Moorhead.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just going to say I can't see anything to object. I think it's a position, it's a large plot.
Yeah.
As you say, on a hill, can't be overlooking other people. So I see nothing to object to.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Moorhead, you were next, and then councillor Ridley, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's quite a substantial addition. However. What I'm wondering is, are there any objections from neighbours?
No. I checked today and then are no objections. As you can see from the actual site location, it's relatively close to the house, slightly lower down from there, there's no objections from them. I think that would certainly be a house that potentially it could be said to be, they would be overlooking, but there is vegetation between the two and. As I said, it's a house on a hill, it's going to be overlooking wherever it goes from that point of view.
I mean, personally, I can't say that I like the vast areas of glass compared with the rest, but. That's just a personal view, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ridley, you wanted to come in on this one.
Yeah, I was just going to say it's a series of large houses all different along there.
Yeah.
I can't see that it's going to make, it's a relatively modern house.
I can't see that it's going to make, it's relatively modern house, if I remember rightly already. I can't see that these changes are going to make any substantial difference to the appearance or the overlooking or the neighbourhood. I would incline to propose no objection.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mary Lather, did you want to come in or did you want to second?
Second.
Fine, thank you. So we have a proposal to accept no objection. And as someone, councillor Lather has seconded that. Did anyone else have anything else to say or we will go to a vote? No, no other points to be made? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Thank you, members. Thank you, accepting no further. Thank you. All right. We will go on to the next item. Which I think is our last one, if memory serves. Okay, so this is 2001 553, 10 Alta Vista Close. This is an address we have seen before. And this is an adjustment, a revised plan to the balcony. If you recall, members, there was a quite a large substantial balcony that was coming out to the drive and it looks like there's the revision. It's not quite as going to be as large a balcony. So it's exactly the same apart from the change in the size of the actual balustrade in the balcony. There we go. I'll bring you in shortly councillor Heath when we come back to members. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Heath, you have your hand raised if you'd like to come in?
Yeah, I think the fact that it has been before as before, that's correct, isn't it?
It has, yes, definitely.
And they're just tweaking it. I'm not quite sure why they tweaked it, whether Tinbridge have asked them to make it a bit smaller, otherwise they wouldn't give permission or not. Yeah?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I think it was revised plans. I don't know if it looks like. It doesn't specify that it's been, they've been requested to change and apart from that there are.
Well, I guess if we approved it last time, they've made it a bit smaller. They don't think we can reverse what we originally said, do you?
Good point.
Funny.
Good point. No, yeah, absolutely. Is it your intention to propose that we accept as stated councillor Heath then on that basis?
I think we can propose that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Taylor?
Happy to second for the same reason.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Did any other members want to have any input on this? Are we happy to go to the vote on this one? It seems a relatively straightforward one from that point of view, but, okay, we'll go to the vote. Thank you. We're accepting no objection. Thank you, members. And I think as we brought each road to the front, that is our last one, I believe councillors. So thank you very much for your attendance and attention this evening. And Yola, I know there was a technical hitch, but thank you for rescuing us and getting everything sorted out in the, eventually. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you and bye bye and everybody.
Bye bye. Breathe again, Yola.